We're going to rearrange our schedule just a little bit this evening. Dr. Brennan, the Chief Medical Officer and Senior Vice President of the University of Pennsylvania Health Systems with a board certification in infectious disease and internal medicine, is back as our guest and to accommodate his schedule, we're going to have him go up first. Dr. Brennan, thanks very much for joining us again. You're on.
My pleasure, Mr. Feinberg. Thank you for having me. I'll start with some background and then bring it a little closer to home and give you some conclusions and then take some questions. So, as you well know, viral transmission is continuing globally. The U.S., Brazil, and India are the three leading countries in terms of cases, and we're closing in on 7 million now with 200,000 deaths. We're still seeing about 40,000 new cases a day in the United States, although the northeastern United States is doing better than most other regions. Since the last time I was here on August 6th, the trends have been positive and fairly consistent week to week with some variation. At the time I was last here, community incidence was about 120 cases per 100,000 population, and it's now approximately 40 cases per 100,000 in the township and about 46 in Delaware County. At that time, test positivity was over 5%, and now it's just over 3%. In the township, the trend has also been positive as it has been in adjacent jurisdictions such as Marple and Upper Darby. In July, we were seeing approximately one new case per day over 30 days, until we saw a bump in late July that was the product of July 4th activity, and that stretched into early August, at which time we were seeing about five new cases a day. Over the last 30 days, however, that number has been cut more than in half, and we're now seeing just over two new cases per day on average. It's noteworthy that in the county, we now have nearly 1,000 persons between birth and 19 years of age who have tested positive for COVID. In late June and into July, that number was less than 200. So we've seen nearly a five-fold increment in school age cases, while there has not been a five-fold increase in cases overall. So younger population is really being disproportionately represented in this phase of the pandemic. There are physical sequelae of the virus that we need to learn more about, including inflammation of the heart and inflammation of the kidneys, and certainly much more to learn about the sequelae of the virus. So, we're in a better place than we were in early August. The trends have been consistently positive. For anyone following the Chester County Health Department data closely, you'll note that a rate that may be reported one week may be different for that same week in the following report. And this results from further investigation of cases and reassignment of cases to other jurisdictions. So it's not really a problem with the data or a problem with the methods of the Health Department. It's just that as they go in and do their contact investigations, they may find that a few cases that were assigned to Haverford may actually belong in Philadelphia or Upper Darby. So it's not an error, just a clarification of the data. All of this background is to say that schools will be engaged in risk mitigation, not the elimination of risk. That risk mitigation is going to require strict adherence to screening by parents. Children with symptoms should not be in school. I expect that absenteeism is going to go up this year. If it doesn't, I think we're probably doing something wrong. Adherence to masking is essential, adherence to distancing, hand hygiene, environmental hygiene, and collaboration with the Chester County Health Department when it's necessary to do contact tracing. So, you know, I think an important point to note is that we're not measuring, or we're not going to be measuring, the incidence of COVID in schools. We're going to be measuring the incidence of COVID in the communities. And that's the performance of our students and families in the community plays a really important role in mitigation, and I can't emphasize that enough. So the conditions right now in the pandemic are as favorable as they have been at just about any time since early in the pandemic, or at least since late June and July. Mitigation efforts will have to continue as we bring people together indoors where the spread of the virus can be more efficient in colder weather. But this is not a seasonal virus. It's been winter and spring in the southern hemisphere, and it has proliferated there. And we certainly know that in spring and summer, it's been a problem here. So we can expect this to be with us for some time to come. But we are in a much better position than we have been, as I said, at any time since the beginning. So I think I'll stop there, Mr. Feinberg, and take your questions.
Thank you very much, Dr. Brennan. Questions from the board? Anyone? Antoinette?
I was using the raise hand feature. Thank you, Dr. Brennan, for joining us again. I really appreciate it. You know, I know the district has been really lucky to have you to join, you know, both in previous meetings and now. So, a couple of questions because I think that now we're at the point where we have the benefit of having other organizations, other schools, other, you know, daycares, things like that, having been open now for weeks, if not months. And so have you seen an increase in cases due to other schools being open in our area? You know, I think a lot of private schools have been open now for three weeks, I want to say. So would we be able to see if those were causing issues? And if we would be able to see that at this point, are they?
I'm not aware, I'm only aware of one school in the region, in the entire region, to my knowledge, that has gone from in-person learning to virtual learning. And that, as I understand it, is going to happen for about two weeks. I believe that was just instituted last week. So I'm not aware, I don't have awareness of all the private and public schools by any means, but that's the only one that I'm aware of. I think what you're going to see are events where a student has a family member who has been identified as having COVID, and you may have to take that child out of school. But I'm not aware of any contact situations or other shutdowns that have happened. I did learn today from the Chester County Health Department on the call that Dr. Roushi and I were on, that there was a small daycare center outbreak in Chester County. And that was discovered as a result of one of the children being tested because a family member was positive. And then there were other students in the daycare who were also positive, but I don't believe there's any information as to whether those were transmissions or other independent cases.
What defines a small outbreak?
I would call a small outbreak anything more than two cases.
You read the articles pertaining to the Chester County Health Department's antibody testing and then shelving that program. How can we be assured that their statistics in Haverford Township and Delaware County are reliable?
Well, that's an entirely different test.
Okay.
That was antibody testing. And these tests that we're relying on are molecular tests that are detecting the presence of the virus. Those antibody tests are not detecting the presence of the virus. They're detecting the presence of an immune response. And that's a much longer story, but I don't think you have any reason to doubt the veracity of the test results that Chester County is reporting.
Mr. Feinberg, if you could use the raise hand feature, there's a few folks ahead of you. Okay, Antoinette, we're back to you.
Thanks. Yeah, I just had another question. So our hybrid plan is what we would move forward to, to go in person due to, you know, the distancing requirements. So our hybrid plan is two days of in-person learning for every student, and then three days virtual. And so, you know, one student would be Monday, Wednesday, in school, and then home Tuesday, Thursday, Friday. There'd be a different group in school two different days. Do you have an opinion on the likelihood of spread with that plan versus, you know, some people in the community have come to us and said, "Why aren't we in school every day with, you know, on half-days?" And I'll just say, you know, regardless of the logistical difficulties that this sort of half-day model would have, you know, for busing and things like that, do you have an opinion on which one would be better to mitigate the spread?
So, in the half-day model, is everybody in class?
In the half-day model, it would still be, I think it would be, instead of having a cohort Monday, Wednesday, the cohort would be mornings. And then cohort B would be in afternoons. So instead of cohort A being Monday, Wednesday, cohort B being Tuesday, Thursday, I think there are maybe some other districts that are looking into this, and we have gotten some community input about it.
Yeah. You know, I don't have an opinion about which one is better without knowing how much you depopulate the school in each plan. So, you know...
I think the school would be about half-populated at any given time because it would be, half the school would be in cohort A, and half the school would be in cohort B, so they wouldn't be in there the same, so...
So either way, it would be half the school?
Right.
Yeah. Well, I think in that case, you know, your ability to mitigate the risk is equal. You know, the critical issue is that you're having fewer students in school. It gives you a greater opportunity to distance them as they're in class and transiting between classes. So I don't really have an opinion as to which one might be superior.
Okay. That's all I had. Thanks.
Thanks. Laura?
Thank you again so much for speaking with us tonight. Just a few questions. I think the last time we spoke, I can't remember if it was with you or Dr. Rubin, but there was concerns about having enough testing. There had been testing shortages and things like that. Where are we with having the ability to do testing and get results quickly?
Testing is in a better place than it was in July and August. There's not as much demand around the country as there was then. I would say that the commercial labs are still not where we would like them to be in the July-August timeframe. The turnaround times were a week or more, sometimes two weeks, and now it's down to, now it's down to three or four days. That's not very useful when it comes to contact tracing because you have somebody, so you would have to, you know, if there was someone you were suspicious about and you had them tested, you would still have to quarantine them for that period while they're waiting for their test to come back. But it's definitely in a better place than it was in terms of capacity.
That's good to know. And then a lot of colleges and universities, for their reopening plans, they required mandatory testing before anyone was allowed to come to campus. Is that something that we should be considering, or is that unnecessary? It's a little bit of a different model, so I'm just trying to think about, you know, what's...
It is. It is a different model. You know, the concern there is that the colleges have students in residential settings, and they're interacting a lot and socializing. And here, it's a community setting. My short answer to the question is that if you could test everybody on a regular basis, that would be ideal. But a regular basis means more than weekly testing to me. A week is a long time to turn around to test and get exposed again. So it gives you, you know, two or three days of assurance that someone is not shedding virus at best, but then three or four days where they could be shedding virus and you don't know about it. So, you know, I think that, you know, if you're going to test, trying to test a couple of times a week probably makes the most sense. And I think that would be very difficult for the public school districts to pull off. It would be inordinately expensive, first of all. It doesn't prevent infection. I want to emphasize that. It does not prevent infection. It helps you find out about infections, and then if you have a rapid turnaround time, you can do contact tracing quickly and prevent further spread. But it's really the behaviors in the community that are going to prevent infection. But the, you know, the average costs of tests are running between about 80, and from the commercial labs, $80 to $120. So, you know, testing a school with 2,000 students twice a week, you know, the numbers get pretty large pretty fast.
Okay. And then, last two questions are sort of related. With the hybrid plan, at the elementary level, the students would be eating during the day, so they'd have to take their masks off to eat, and there would certainly be, you know, it would be a maskless time. So I was wondering for that, sort of, what are the risks? And then similarly, one of the things we're going to be talking about tonight would be athletics. And so at some point, students might need to take their mask off to participate in athletic activities, and if it were indoors, you know, where we know the risk is higher when you're indoors. So can you talk a little bit about that and the risks associated with that?
Sure. You know, for eating, having the mask off for as short a time as possible, I think is essential. Spacing as much as possible. So, you know, again, you're trying to implement a layered set of activities. Obviously, the mask has to come off at lunchtime, but spacing the students out is helpful as well. Screening is very important, so that's the first step. And making sure they're using good hand hygiene. And for, you know, the few minutes that they're having lunch, they'll have to have the mask off, and that will create some hazard, but hopefully not too much. Athletics, athletics is a challenge. The only athletic activity that I'm certain has resulted in transmission, and I probably don't know about all of them, but the only one that I'm certain has resulted in transmission is basketball. Very clearly, back in the spring, the NBA had transmissions between teams that were related to competition. I think all of the other activities that surround team sports are probably more hazard than most of the outdoor sports. So riding on buses, socializing, being in locker rooms, being in close proximity to each other, those are, you know, those are probably more hazardous than the actual competition. I'm not aware of any transmissions in football, although I can certainly imagine that they could happen. Just, you know, you don't have to be in contact with someone for 15 minutes to result in a transmission. The hitting, the close contact between linemen, you know, there's certainly evidence of other infectious diseases being transmitted between people who hit each other, literally. So a defensive back and a wide receiver, or a lineman and a quarterback, those transmissions occur that way. So I would expect some could happen that way. It's very clear that transmissions can occur in training, in weight training and working with trainers and those sorts of activities. That, I think, has happened at quite a few colleges around the country and with some professional sports teams. So there are, I think, special hazards associated with athletics. I think that that would be an area where, you know, just given all the activities that I described, trying to test those teams makes sense to me.
Great. Thank you.
Next up, Bridgette?
I was also going to ask about the sports and any indicators that you've seen that practicing or playing athletic games has been transmission, and it sounds like you've covered that. Thank you.
Okay.
In earlier discussions we've had over the summer, there's been some more thought about how our youngest students, the kindergarten, first grade, elementary, and the virus transmission among high school students is different. Have any of your data or, I think you talked about seeing youth, but you gave kind of birth to 19 as a range. At this point, are there any special concerns for age groups? Or in particular, high school, I think, was the one that we had heard concerns about before?
Yeah, most of those, that 1,000-case number that I mentioned is mostly in the 10- to 19-year-old age group. And from, not from Delaware County data, but from other data, it's probably, there's probably a progression towards the older ages with an aggregation of more cases in older individuals and probably more symptomatic as well. It's clear, though, that young children do get infected and shed the virus. It's still not clear, however, what role they play in transmission of the virus in the community. You know, did they get it from a parent? Or can they take it home and spread it to a parent? Or, you know, does it occur more in one direction or another? That's not well-understood at this point still.
Okay, Bridgette? Next up, Kristin?
Sorry, I've got a baby right here. So my question, Dr. Brennan, is, as parents weigh having to report to work and whether or not they should keep their sick child home? And I'm thinking in terms of mild symptoms, like maybe their throat's a little scratchy or their nose is a little runny. Where should parents kind of draw the line in choosing to keep their child home or send them to school?
You know, it's a really important question and a really tough one. I think that until we get further into the school year and have greater, you know, a greater sense of where we are, and the projections are that things will continue to get better, the CDC projections, I should have mentioned, in Delaware County over the next month, the projections are that it will get better. I think that we should be erring on the side of keeping kids home. You know, the symptoms are very nonspecific. We're getting into respiratory virus season, and I know that that's a bitter pill to swallow. But that would be my bias, you know, going into the school year, that kids ought to stay home if they have these nonspecific symptoms until they can be cleared or the symptoms resolve quickly.
Thank you.
Ari?
Thank you, Larry. And once again, I apologize for jumping the gun earlier. When providing these opinions and guidance, Dr. Brennan, in concert with the Chester County Health Department, are any other health and wellness factors taken into account? Or is it strictly all about coronavirus?
You're asking about my opinions?
Correct. Your opinions, and I'm sure you're working closely with the Chester County Health Department, or at least making sure that there's some coordination in the opinions and guidance and advice that you're giving to school districts so that, you know, you're not on completely divergent paths. The reason I ask, I'll give you an example. I heard that child line reporting is down 50%, and that's a very scary statistic to think that there are children at risk because they're at home.
Yeah, yeah. Dr. Edelberg quoted similar numbers to us on a superintendent's call earlier in the summer. She said that they, I think they got something like five calls a day or five calls a week, and they had gone down to one. So I appreciate that, and I appreciate the difficulties of having children who ought to be in school and getting, you know, in school and developing, having them at home. That's not my area of expertise. And so I would say that I'm weighing in on the virus. I'm certainly listening to the experts in child development and, you know, the other matters that you just raised. But that's not my area of expertise. And I think that, you know, my input to you is on the safety of the school and the community. And, you know, I think that, you know, weighing that in concert with the other concerns is important, but I don't feel like I'm expert in those issues enough to weigh in on them.
Understood. My next question. Would there ever be, has there ever been historically a condition where the spacing mandate changes? So right now, it's a six-foot mandating of space, which limits our ability to do more than the cohort hybrid model. And that's a state mandate, not a Dr. Brennan mandate. Is there a chance in the history of epidemiology that, you know, that could change?
Well, I will say that I have advocated for that from the beginning. You'll recall that early on, Bucks County was recommending closer spacing, and I was not an advocate of that. So I agree with that. I think with all that we know about, and there's certainly more to learn, but the nature of this virus and its mode of spread, I don't see closer spacing, I don't see spacing changing until we have a good degree of herd immunity, either through an effective vaccine or more widespread infection or an effective treatment. So I don't see six feet of spacing changing anytime soon.
Thank you.
Dave?
Hi, and thank you once again, Dr. Brennan. I seem to say that when we're off and every time you're here. I said, I mean, I want a question, I guess Kristin kind of alluded to it earlier. Is there any distinction between, or, I mean, there are a few, but is there any rock-solid distinction between symptoms of the coronavirus and allergies? I know a few weeks ago, I had, you know, a lot of students had allergies. A few weeks ago, I had a sore throat, was sneezing, wasn't sure if I should get tested, but no fever, nothing like that. Is there any distinction that parents can make if their child feels sick, but if their fever, for example, is not over 100? Is it safe to send them in more or less, or can that be misleading, I guess? I think you're muted.
It, the symptoms are very nonspecific. The most characteristic symptoms of COVID are loss of taste and smell and a very specific type of rash. And other than that, it's really hard to distinguish. Now, gastrointestinal symptoms and a sore throat are less common. You know, the most important symptoms are cough and shortness of breath, and certainly fever when you have it. But as many as half the patients who are presenting with COVID infections don't have fever at presentation. And even if they do, they don't always have fever. It kind of comes and goes. So fever, shortness of breath, and cough are really, a really important triad. Loss of sense of taste and smell is most characteristic of COVID. But certainly, when you have a head cold, as I'm sure everybody on this call knows, you can lose your sense of taste and smell, but that ought to set off alarm bells.
Okay, appreciate that. And then also, my other question was about sports. We, I think we all know that outdoor sports, we have less possibility of transmission than indoor sports, obviously. I'm just curious if there are any studies that have been done that can give a kind of a comparison about versus indoor? If you, to follow up to that, what additional steps could be taken for indoor sports to help to reduce the transmission for both players and if they're spectators? Not now yet, but obviously in the future.
I'm not aware of any published studies yet. You know, it's so recent that, you know, everything was shut down in March, and nobody was playing anything until really Major League Baseball and soccer started to play over the summer. So apart from the, you know, case reports and anecdotes in the news about Major League Baseball, I'm not aware of any published studies that indicate the relative risk of outdoor sports versus indoor sports, or exactly the kind of contact. But, you know, any activity that's going to create aerosols that you could inhale. So I could imagine, I could imagine that on a cross-country team that is running outdoors, but everybody is, you know, running at a pace and in a bunch, that you could have transmission even in those circumstances because you're breathing each other's air. In terms of what you can do with indoor sports, there I think that frequent testing is really necessary. I'm working with one athletic program right now that's not, it's not high school or college, but what I've found is that it's really necessary to test at least twice a week and emphasize all the preventive measures, all the mitigating measures in order to assure that they're safe in their activities and they're safe when they're competing against others. And short of that, you know, I mean, basketball players are leaning on each other and breathing on each other, and, you know, wrestlers, there's no closer contact sport than that. So I can't think of any good mitigating approaches for those situations other than screening everybody regularly.
Thank you.
Okay.
Next up, Sal?
Dr. Brennan, thank you for being here.
Dr. Brennan, thank you for being here. When when we talk about being in a mitigation type mode here in terms of, you know, mitigating strategies for this, are we going to have to look down the path of potentially pivoting back to a virtual model? If the numbers say that that would be the better choice at that point? And then if we do, is that for the district as a whole? Or would we be potentially, you know, suggesting that specific schools would then move to a virtual model in order to mitigate the spread of the virus? Or is it based on community? Or what is the guidance there at that point?
It it could be either. It could be either. I think if you're having, you know, significant outbreaks, if you have a significant outbreak in a school involving multiple classrooms with, you know, no epidemiologic link among the cases, then I think you could be looking at at closing a school. On the other hand, if the community incidence rises and the the test positivity rate is getting up above seven percent towards 10% as it was back in the spring, then you could be looking at shutting down the whole district.
Okay, thank you. And I guess also what I'm asking is that despite the trend in the favorable circumstance right now, that we kind of have to stay on the alert and and with some guidance, potentially pivot down the line.
We do, yeah, yeah. We have to, we have to, you know, continue with these mitigating approaches for the foreseeable future. Yeah.
Thank you.
Antoinette?
Thanks. Yeah, I just had a couple more questions quickly. So, you know, like, like you started off, you said that the Northeast in the United States is doing better and mitigating the virus spread than than some other parts. And so should we be? I I believe that there's a recommendation from the the governor, from the state, saying that certain, if you travel to certain states, you are recommended to quarantine. But I don't believe that it's a mandate to do that. And so should we also be encouraging folks if they take a trip to, you know, the latest hotspot that they should, they should be quarantining and not be coming to school within 14 days?
The, yeah, there are, the last time I looked, the last time I, the list changes regularly. Over the space of about, the span of about two weeks, North Carolina was added to the list, having previously been dropped. It was added back to the list and then taken off again. So the list goes fast. There are at least 14 states on the list right now. There is no real mechanism to enforce that. But I I think that, I think that, you know, to the extent that you know about such travel, you have to quarantine. I I think that if you have that information in hand, you just can't sort out what people were doing or who they were with and what those people were doing when they were in North Carolina or Florida or Texas, which is some of the, some of the quarantine states. So it's tough to enforce, but but I encourage it. And that's what we did at Penn. That we, we do have some undergrads on campus, even though we're all virtual. And they had to quarantine for 14 days when they came in.
Thanks. And then the last, the last thing I'll bring up is just that, like you said before, there are other viruses that have similar symptoms. And so I just want to talk about the flu vaccine again, which is available now. And just for the record, do you recommend that every single person in our township? And especially in our schools, get the flu vaccine?
Everybody over the age of two ought to get the flu vaccine.
Okay, thanks so much.
Okay.
Kristin?
Yeah, just one additional question. So I know some research was released a couple of weeks ago showing that a group of people who tested positive for COVID were twice as likely to have frequented restaurants in the previous two weeks before their testing or when they were found to be positive. So I'm thinking in terms of our cafeterias, especially our elementary students who'll be eating lunch in the cafeterias with their masks off. Considering that restaurants are places where people take their mask off to eat, similar to our cafeterias, should we be, I'm just wondering, are there additional precautions we should be taking? Is six feet enough? I know that research is also showing that, you know, COVID can be transmitted beyond six feet through aerosols. Yeah.
Yeah, so restaurants, obviously, are different than the cafeteria. And it's hard to, it's hard to know exactly. It's hard to know what to make of that, except that people were out and about. You know, were they waiting at a bar, at the bar at the restaurant to get a table? And, you know, were they cheek to jowl with other people as they were, as they're waiting to be seated? I think, you know, for the, you know, for the sake of the cafeteria, having the students, you know, time and distance matter. So having them there for, having the mask down for as short a period of time as possible. And having them at least six feet apart is important. And I I don't think there's more that you can do, except perhaps putting up Plexiglas between each seat in the cafeteria or letting them eat outside or in the classroom and having having sufficient space. But I think that, I think that, you know, my, you know, without, that that study, you know, identified a risk factor. It didn't identify the specifics. And I think that a cafeteria is probably not the same level of risk as a restaurant.
Thank you.
Ari?
Thank you. Dr. Brennan, how intense is the virus in our area relative to, you know, earlier in the year when we saw a lot of hospitalization and we saw a lot of death? What's the hospitalization numbers like right now? How many people are on ventilators and mainline health and at Penn, so on and so forth? How serious is the state of the virus if you go to the hospital?
There are very few people in the hospital now across the entire region. I'm on a call with fellow chief medical officers every couple of weeks. And, you know, we have very few, very few people in our hospital system. So you have a five and six member hospital system. And you might have 30 or 40 patients across the entire system who are hospitalized. There's no evidence that the virus is less virulent. There is evidence that it is, has moved to younger populations and that there aren't as many older people getting infected now. That may be for a couple of reasons. One may be the difference in behaviors between, you know, those who are 50 and older and those who are 30 and younger. I think that there's probably something to that. The so and and that may be the, that may be the most, the most important issue. Younger people are out more and appear to be socializing and and probably not using masks as often and are getting more infected more often. So the pandemic definitely has has shifted age groups. There's no evidence that it's less virulent, however. We do know how to treat it better. We are not putting as many patients on ventilators. We're sort of, you know, toughing our way through those periods where patients are in most distress and using steroids to decrease the inflammatory response. And they seem not to need ventilators as often as they as they did early on. The other issue is that there are very, very few cases coming out of nursing homes now. There are almost no cases coming out of nursing homes. You know, here and there, you'll have a small outbreak in a in a nursing home and some patients will go to the hospital. But I I don't see Delaware County nursing home data. I don't, I don't know that we have it broken out that way specifically, at least I've never seen it. But in Philadelphia, they do. And, you know, over the course of a week, there might be three or four or five cases coming out of nursing homes. I think that reflects two things. One, many patients got sick, left the nursing homes, many of them died. Two, I think there's a possibility that there's herd immunity in nursing homes because so many people were sick and so many staff were sick that everybody's had it. And and it's just not, and I think nursing homes are doing a better job of keeping it under control now than they were early on when they were pretty, pretty bereft of resources. But I don't think it's a different virus. I don't think it's less virulent.
Other questions from the board?
I just have a couple of comments before we let you go, Dr. Brennan. We have over 400 members of the public attending the meeting this evening. And you had mentioned loss of sense of smell earlier. And I just want to let folks know. Anecdotally, what I've heard from people is that you can't smell the coffee and you can't smell the bacon. So that's, those are, those are pretty profound.
And sometimes that's the only thing that we we've seen cases where it's only loss of sense of taste and smell.
Now, many of the school districts in the rest of the state had a week or two or possibly more head start on us. And I've I follow all of the newspapers around the state on a daily basis. And, you know, I can say that, you know, I've probably seen 40 or 50 cases throughout the state. Lancaster County, York County, I think there are more districts with infections in York County than not. Lancaster is reporting two dozen cases spread across a bunch of districts. Most of the, most of the incidents around the state are onesies and twosies. It's maybe one or two students or a staff member. State college at this point is a mess. You know, they, they're, the rate in the town itself and at the college is so high that they've had to reconsider and stick with virtual learning in the state care, state college area school district. So
Yeah.
But, you know, good news is I'm not hearing of any fatalities. And that's
Yeah, yeah. Now, I'm not aware of those numbers that I quoted earlier. I'm not aware, I'm not aware of any fatalities in Delaware County.
So, you know, I I just want to say what a, what a valuable resource you've been for us. And and thank you for your accessibility. I really, nothing personal, but I really look forward to the day when we don't see you anymore.
I'm not offended. I'm not offended.
Well, thank you very much. We really appreciate you taking the time with us this evening.
My pleasure.